All right, Mr. Dixon.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Morning.
So this morning, we have an exciting update, particularly around our strategic work with small business, entrepreneurial and small business development. You know, the city of Dayton is a city of small businesses. And eighty percent of our economic growth comes from our existing businesses. So we work, obviously, very hard with those existing businesses, small businesses, to help them scale when they are ready, to help them with investments and these, to do that. And so these public-private partnerships are really important in the landscape of economic development. What's also really important is entrepreneurial development and facilitating a strong ecosystem that serves and supports those entrepreneurs, whether they're baking in their kitchen, you know, maintaining their landscaping equipment in their garage, or starting a completely different entrepreneurial endeavor with technology, et cetera. We have a rich ecosystem. And Scott Kornike, as the president of Entrepreneur Center, has been driving these missions and visions for many years now and getting some great traction, particularly with the expansion of the hub at the arcade. And so he's going to walk through the scope of work that they provide. We have long time been an investor and supporter of Entrepreneur Center and their work because of the importance of that entrepreneurial strategy. And so I'll turn it over to Scott Kornike to lead us through the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioner, let me begin, unless you can begin by saying thank you. I don't think you can overstate the importance of the city. The city leadership, you know, last ten years of the entrepreneur. You just can't. Yes, we, as a community and as an ecosystem, have gone on to do one of the things, and we're going to talk about that. The work really started ten years ago when the Entrepreneur Center, the city and other organizations learned to get out of our own way and learn to work as a community, learn to work in our respective spaces. And honestly, that was driven by the city. It was driven by the city manager. It was driven by the city commission. It was driven by the confidence that the city had in the organizations inside of the community. So at the outset, if there's nothing you remember from this presentation today, other than this, thank you. The leadership, I have think has been tremendous. And then the residents of Dayton and the region have been well-served by the leadership of the commission. I've had the pleasure of working with local city managers. I've had the pleasure of working with many of the commissioners, a couple of mayors. And the leadership from the small business perspective is tremendous. So thank you at the outset for that. One little quick note. My presentation views the entrepreneurial ecosystem from the regional perspective. And the reason I think it's important in standing in front of the city commission to talk regionally is because our region can't be the region it is without the urban core. It just can't. And so I will do everything I can to, when I give you a number or give you a total or I give you an impact, to bring it to the city. We produce the report for the city manager and for the commission each year, which implies in very specific ways exactly what we do in the city. But I thought it might be helpful just to give you the grander vision, because that's how you all, you know, think and that's how you operate the commission. The grander vision of the region, how important the city is to the region. So forgive me for that. It is a regional presentation, but I will, I will bring it to the, to the city level. A pretty aggressive agenda, and I want to be respectful of your time. I threw everything in here, and I can go and indire if you want. I don't expect you to be particularly interested in the capital access strategy we're employing. I don't expect that you're going to care a great deal about what we're doing from an operating perspective, the budgets. But I want to be an open book. I want to be totally transparent with you as to how we use our money, where we get our money from, how we deploy those resources. So this is a lot. So quickly, please, ask any questions. If I'm going down a path you don't want to go down, correct me, point me in a better direction. But I'm excited to do this because it's the first chance I've had in this current commission to give you that thirty thousand-foot perspective. Questions before I begin at all? Anything any of the commissioners specifically would like me to cover as I? So let me begin by the regional framework. I have had the pleasure, as I said, of working with this commission and the city manager for a number of years. And you've seen these evolutions. And I just want to footstomp what I said earlier. The belief in the Entrepreneur Center, partnership with the city, has been transformational for us. We originally were an incubator. We were on seven fourteen East Monument Avenue, as you might recall. Nineteen ninety-eight, we incorporated. Two thousand, we opened that building, which is now, as you know, been repurposed. We were an incubator. Incubator implies that we focused on what happened inside our four walls. If you were inside those four walls, we incubated you just like a little egg. We incubated you. You're supposed to hatch and go out into the, into the city. In about twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, we started focusing on commercialization primarily because we know what Mr. Commissioner Joseph does for a living. And we needed to pull people from the Air Force Base. We have this massive engine, and it gives yourself massive engine. You've got to bring value to the urban core from the work that goes on in the Air Force Base. So we focused on commercialization. About three years ago, we shifted that to innovation. We did that for a specific reason. The first reason and the primary reason is because we support a lot more than technology entrepreneurs. We support entrepreneurs of all time. In fact, by volume, we have more, what we affectionately call Main Street entrepreneurs in our portfolio than we do technology entrepreneurs. So to say we were focused on commercialization implies to the bakery, or implies to the hair salon, implies to the service station, or implies to the consultant, we're not commercializing anything. So our pivot was really innovation. Every one of our entrepreneurs at some level are innovating. Again, the evolution of the organization from focusing on the inside of the building, seven fourteen, to now at the arcade, really a center of gravity for the entrepreneurial community, intentional, focused on innovation. Our vision, therefore, had to change as well. Our vision now is we want to be leading regional and national center of excellence. We take that very seriously. I can tell you unequivocally, the city of Dayton, the work we do from an entrepreneurial perspective in partnership with the city at the Entrepreneur Center is viewed as a national model. It's especially true as a model of how a city and a community can embrace a research, primary research facility. We are viewed as the subject matter experts. In fact, we are, the Air Force is accelerated, which we'll talk about in a moment. So we are local by design, national in impact. And again, we take that very seriously. We have a national impact, but we're a local economic development organization. We live to serve the city of Dayton, constituents that you all have in the city of Dayton and the region. That is our primary focus. Got national programs frankly help us fund some of what we do. Our mission statement, we've simplified it a lot. It's getting more simple. In our upcoming board meeting, we're going to even simplify our three-point mission a little bit more. At the end of the day, we focus on progress and prosperity through entrepreneurship. That's all we do. Progress and prosperity through entrepreneurship. Main Street focus, technology focus. If you're an entrepreneur, we as an organization exist to serve your interests. Very simple mission. Our evolution, for those of you who've kind of watched the organization, as I said, founded in nineteen ninety-eight, gone through a number of evolutionary steps. But the biggest evolutionary step we as an organization had was moving to the city. And again, I can't thank this commission and the city for their vision, patience, the foresight it had to focus on and provide resource to the arcade so that we can turn it into what it is now. We have a hundred or eighty businesses working in that space now. Those hundred or eighty businesses have about nine hundred employees that come to work every day in our space. The University of Dayton and Sinclair Community College are hosting about forty classes each week in that space. So there's another four hundred and fifty or five hundred students that are walking through those doors every day, coming into the arcade, into the hub, working with our entrepreneurs. We're now seeing this beautiful synergy between higher education, students in a design class or an engineering class, who are first interns for our startups in our space. So you're seeing that beautiful sort of synergistic relationship that we've all tried to create. And of course, you've been supportive of the hotel and all of the work going on in the arcade. It is nice to know that we see the finish line. We see a lot of energy there. So that's a huge evolution for us. I'm going to update you on the impact number, but we hit a billion dollars of economic impact since twenty seventeen. We'll give you a little bit more detail in a moment. But at the end of twenty twenty-four, about eight hundred and twenty-five million dollars of impacts since twenty seventeen. That's primarily in the technology space. And you can see an example of the kind of companies that we have in our portfolio. But the economic impacts that we're driving through the community, through the region are extraordinary. Rule of thumb I would give you is, as you look at, when I give you a regional number, it's driven in the city. That's almost true of all of our metrics. I'll touch on more specific metrics as we go through. But the city has seen six hundred and fifty million dollars of economic impacts since twenty seventeen. Right? I do want to give you a regional framework for the work that we do. To build it back to what I was saying about the importance of the city and the vision that the city has had that enables us to create a strategy which is far more reaching and technological, reaches out into our whole community. You have had Bruce Katz join the commission and join the city in thinking about city strategies. Bruce Katz has built a, I think, an elegant sort of model for innovation. And it's this three-part model. There's economic assets, there's networking assets, there's physical assets. Dayton region and the city of Dayton is blessed with all three. Economic assets, including Wright-Patt or universities, networking assets, organizations like the Entrepreneur Center, MBAC, all of these organizations that exist to serve entrepreneurs in the community. Soon, Ibrock, to support the community, and these great physical assets, the arcade specifically, other buildings in the, in the urban core. You put those things together, and you have something. And that's really, we've been operating under this strategy that we want to amplify economically, physically, and physical assets. Want to put those together. We happen to believe, and you'd expect me to say this, small business is the glue that holds that sort of strategy together. It's also true that big business does the same. But for us, we're focused on creating a strategy for the city of Dayton and for the region that takes advantage of all of those assets, puts them together, works in concert with each other to amplify the voice of our citizens. I can't ignore the fact that Wright-Patterson Air Force Base is in that backyard. Obviously, that is a huge economic driver. You all know that better than I do. But what people tend to forget is the city of Dayton is also an economic development organization. And so we believe that you've got to work in concert. The urban core has to serve the larger region. The region has to serve the urban core. And so we try to be a bridge as small businesses and as an economic development organization. We try to be a bridge between urban core and Wright-Patt. How do we do that? It's really commercialization technologies. It's really finding opportunities for people who work on the, the civilians or for the military. As they think about a second career or a final career, they have a place to shoot, they have a place to take a technology and develop. They have another step in their career. We try to amplify the hub and use the hub to serve Wright-Patt. Every two weeks, Wright-Patterson Air Force Base hosts a collider in the arcade. And so you have at any given time thirty or forty uniformed civilian members of the force research labs coming to the hub. They're engaged in downtown, engaged in conversations about downtown. We're trying to be a bridge really to connect to those huge economic engines. We are also a larger bridge. We're also connected to the larger Ohio innovation. A bit of an eye chart, but let me just say that we are joined by four other organizations in our state. The state has been very smart through multiple administrations, bipartisan support for a series of programs, which we'll talk about, that allow us to do really important work to connect our urban core and our region to the larger state of Ohio and drive economic growth and economic development. And you're seeing billions and billions and billions of dollars of economic development. I prepared a briefing yesterday. Over the course of twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four, fifteen billion dollars of economic impact has been driven by those five organizations. Again, it's a connected ecosystem that lets us support companies in Cleveland because of the assets we have in the city, because of our manufacturing assets, for example, or because of our Air Force Research Laboratory asset. So it connects the urban core into that larger state ecosystem and creates something which we think is really unique. I also do want to highlight, however, the importance of the city to what we're trying to do. And that is to drive non-dilutive investment in small businesses. So if you've spent any time with me, you've seen this chart before. I only have so many jokes on one of these slides. This is one slide I need over and over again. If you look at since twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one, small business innovative research, and I'm not even sure what STTR stands for. Consider it, sir. These are research contracts that the Air Force lets into small businesses. If you look at the state of Ohio, twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one, six hundred and seventy-one million dollars of research contracts were awarded into the state of Ohio. The Dayton MSA got forty-six percent of that. And the city, confines of the city, got five percent of that. There is no urban core in the state of Ohio that has higher performance than the city of Dayton in twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one. And by the way, twenty twenty-one was the last date we have the full data set, personal data sets. It tells the same story, but I wanted to give you the complete data set that we had, twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one. City is leading all municipal municipalities in driving federal investment in the ecosystem. Being, we're connecting, the research that's going on at the Air Force Research Laboratories into the urban core. Where do you see that primarily? You're walking and you're meeting small business. Think about Webster Street Station. Area three. Think about Battle Site Technologies, Mile Two, RJR. Kind of that Webster Street Station area is where we have been, as companies have graduated from our work, they've been moving into that space. And so a lot of that is concentrated in those kind of companies. Questions?
I'll continue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So let me give you a sense of the programs that we run. I'm very proud of our team. We are a team that will end twenty twenty-five with about twenty-seven members. We'll add another twenty or so part-time members of our staff. And we're very proud of the work that they do. Very proud of our mission, again, to focus on growing progress and prosperity. So we have a very diverse staff. That's really important to me and my team. I'll talk about that in some detail in a moment. But I will simply say we look like the community we serve. We have very intention. We're very fortunate to have the kind of partners that we have. Chief Ammonos, of course, is the city of Dayton. But we have been very fortunate to increasingly engage our corporate partners in the work that we're doing. If you went through and invited me to this chair five years ago, so maybe ten years ago, I would have said, and I've said publicly, one of the challenges Dayton has is that contrary to maybe the three Cs, we don't have a large corporate culture which engraves as a small business culture. Now, part of that is a numbers game. You don't have a huge number of our corporate headquarters. There's not as much money that can be put into the small business community. But we've been working diligently to try to engage our large corporate partners in support of entrepreneurs. One of the ways we're doing that is by being valuable to those. If you're valuable to the corporate partners, as they think about internal innovation, as they think about managing assets, as they think about engaging with the community, we find they suddenly become much more interested in small businesses. So we're focused on engaging this corporate culture, corporate community in both support of the economic development ecosystem, in support of the small business ecosystem, but also in support of their own innovation network. So very fortunate to have these kind of partners. And again, just to go back to founding, certainly twenty fifteen, we had two of those. We were really focused on becoming a member of the community and reaching deeply into the community. We do everything you'd expect us to do, from providing business advice to providing entrepreneurs and residents to working through an IP strategy, through providing support to small businesses that are going after government contracts, SPR, STTR contracts, acquisition contracts. Everything that you would expect a full-service innovation center to do, we try to do. If we don't do it, we make sure that we make a warm handoff to partners in the community. We don't believe in saying no to anybody. We don't say no to anyone. If you come into the doors of the Entrepreneur Center, at the very least, you're going to hear, this is the right person. We're going to make a warm introduction. We're going to make sure that that experience is positive. More often than not, yes, we can help. I don't need to talk about the space. You guys have lived it, breathed it, and kind of made some very different decisions on it. Again, I would say just thank you for that. You've enlivened the space. If you all believed in, your thought was really powerful. Man, it was, it was not great. And now, it is envy of organizations across the country. We have Startup Week going on this week. So even as we speak, there are eight hundred entrepreneurs at the hub right now walking through workshops and programs. We've got a number of guests from out of town, keynote speakers and the like, and over and over and over again here in the scene of space. So Dayton, Ohio is definitely on the map for the way that the city has supported the entrepreneurial ecosystem. We don't have any specific fund. We don't operate a venture fund. We don't operate direct investment. We've done that a little bit by intent and a little bit, but just by circumstance. We do have a small rotunda fund. That fund is closed. We opened that fund about three years ago. That fund was really focused on underserved entrepreneurs who just needed a little help as they began the process of being bankable. You have to have trailing revenue. You've got assets. Traditional financing is challenging for entrepreneurs and certainly underserved entrepreneurs. So we've formed a rotunda fund. We just provide a little bridge fund really to help those entrepreneurs prepare for more formal bank loans or other investments. We've made seven investments. Five of those have exited. And we're underwater a little bit, transparently. We haven't made our money back for our investors yet. Have to do that. Very proud of the companies that we have. What we have, though, done is aggregated individuals together into what we call EC angels. Historically, investors that wanted to participate in an angel fund left the city. They went to Columbus, whether it was at Columbus Funds, or they went to Indiana or formalized angel networks. We didn't like that. Didn't make sense to us, so we formed the EC Angels Group that we have now. About sixty local angels. We just had another five sign up. About sixty local angel investors are looking at small business opportunities, both technology and traditional business opportunities. We have them look at these companies. They generally ten to seventy-five, maybe a hundred to something like that. So the angel network is activated in the, in the city and the region really for the first time. So we're excited about the ability of those angels to bring capital to early-stage businesses. We are looking to open a local fund. I promise, I will not be back in front of you asking for any money for that. I promise. I do, at the very end of this deck, have some information about our vision for the local fund. Happy to go into it, maybe beyond the scope of today's conversation, but I wanted you to have it. We do think a local fund is important. We do think the ability to make our own decisions about early-stage capital is important to control our own destiny. And really, what I mean by controlling our own destiny is being the place that there's loyalty. That first source of capital often comes from the, my people talk about, you moved to Silicon Valley. I took A-round, invested a million dollars. I had to move to Silicon Valley, had to move to Boston, had to move to Chicago. We want to have that same conversation. But we want to say, your first money, your substantive money came in, came from Dayton, Ohio. It came from local investors in Dayton, Ohio. There is no reason for you to leave this community. Your loyalty must and should be here. So we believe in a local fund. Probably, if I'm fortunate enough to be invited back in front of you in twenty-six, you probably have more, you're actively engaging with investors right now. It's sort of testing you. You've got to hose in the water to see how much money might sell you. Our deal flow engine is significant. Again, when I look at regional numbers, Matt, for all of you in the, in commission, is taking about sixty-five percent of this. And that's what the city is contributing to what's going on within the Entrepreneur Center. We get about four hundred inquiries a year. Main Street businesses, businesses don't have a technology core. We have about twenty-five different events every year. We have about twenty-five new business starts that come out every year. We see five hundred conferences. We have a huge book of business, if you will, huge, a huge portfolio of clients. We've been working, making, we're having to do that every year. When you think about technology businesses, you generally get about twenty clients a year. When we say clients, that is not say we're talking to twenty companies that end up being in our portfolio. We've seen ninety-five or so in our portfolio, sixty new technology companies a year. Of those sixty, about twenty, I'm saying ready, I mean, ready for formalized services, which I'll talk about in a moment. We don't drop them on their head. We don't say, we can't help you. We help them through the process of getting ready to be put into the portfolio. But when I say in the portfolio, I don't believe in, I talked to Matt, if I may, just to be, you know, to bring it to a personal level. I talked to Matt. Matt said he's interested. He's not my client now. No, he's not. I haven't done anything for you. So we count the client when we start to deliver services to that company. We count the client when we're actually meaningfully making a difference. You didn't just ring and go, and I say, ah, I've got another client and it looks good on the report to the city, the, the city commissioners. You've got hundreds of clients. Clients are people that were actually at the home. So very significant. If I would have stood in front of you ten years ago, it would have looked probably more like thirty to forty Main Street businesses, and it probably looked like four or five tech. The community is just different. Ecosystem is just different. And again, the city, our industries are exactly what you'd expect. You could overlay the Air Force Research Laboratories Directorate structure on this. You'd hit it almost perfectly. Software and IT, that's the Information Directorate. That's actually in Rome, New York. A lot of that goes on, as Commissioner Joseph does, goes on in Dayton. So software and IT drives a lot of what we do. Advanced materials, Materials and Manufacturing Directorate. Sensors, the Sensors Directorate. Biomedical, seven-eleven, human, seven-eleven, human performance. Manufacturing, Manufacturing Directorate. Life Sciences, again, seven-eleven. Energy is tucked up under aerospace systems. So it shouldn't surprise you. People leaving service, people saying, you just have to come out of the Air Force Research Lab and do something else. They're starting companies, and they're taking what they know. And so we're capitalizing on that. IT, without question, remains our highest-growth area. It is also. They said diversity inclusion is really important to us. In twenty twenty-four, fifty-four percent of our portfolio of clients are women founders, forty-seven percent are minority founders, eleven percent are veteran founders. You can hear me talk about our Small Business Development Center in a moment. Look at our SBDC program. Well, more than sixty percent of our portfolio of clients. We, the Entrepreneur Center, have adopted, three years ago, a very formal diversity inclusion plan. It requires diversity of staff. It requires diversity in our board. It requires diversity in our supplier network. And it fosters diversity in our clients. So again, I said it earlier, we want to look like the community we serve. We want to hold ourselves to the standards that we would expect other people to, to have for themselves. And so we want to make sure that when we're picking suppliers for our technology or non-technology businesses, they represent the community. We want to make sure that we, as a staff, look like the community we serve. Our board looks like the community we serve. We measure that specifically every year. We have a diversity inclusion committee on our board that has a representative who sits outside of my specific, I got to say this directly. That person is on my staff, but reports to the board. Because the board needs to have transparency into how we operate our organization. Can't be shielded by anything that I say or do. They need to be able to say, why is the company doing this? Why is the, why is the program making these decisions from a supplier perspective? We thought it was appropriate that that not be centered on me, that it be centered on a staff member who reports directly to that board. So we take this very seriously. I will say, we are not changing our language. We have a diversity inclusion committee. It's going to remain the diversity inclusion committee. That is a committee that City Manager has been really instrumental in reinforcing and enforcing. So thank you, Charlie, for your leadership there. Again, I don't want to overstate it. It's hugely important. Startup Week going on right now. I would love to welcome you all to Startup Week. If you get a chance, I would love to host you. Today is the second day of Startup Week. It's had about 800 entrepreneurs sitting over at the hub right now. And we have a Launchpad Series where every month, we're focusing on talent, and we're focusing on companies, and we're trying to bring energy to the community. So we start that in April and go through September. September's the capstone of Startup Week. About 30,000 members who get our newsletters. So a huge reach, well outside of the city of Dayton, well outside of the region. And we're trying to amplify those voices of the companies and amplify the voices that we have in the community. I'll stop there for a moment. Any questions?
Just one, if I could, and that is, you mentioned local funds, which I'd love to hear. And just out of curiosity, can you ballpark how much it would take to get started?
Yeah, absolutely. So the question of how much it would take to get started really is a question of what impact you want to have. So if we all put in, you know, chipped into the proverbial tin cup, and in this room, we were able to raise a million dollars. Most of those early investments are going to be $200,000 to $300,000. You're going to touch. Usually, when you run a fund like that, you deploy about 75% of your capital. You reserve 25% for following investments. So you're really talking about $750,000, maybe two investments. It's not a lot of impact. For those companies, it's huge. Not a lot of impact. So, direct answer to your question, we think a $5 million fund is really necessary to have the kind of impact. We would love to do a $10 million fund. That will require, transparently, institutional support. It's going to require our universities to be involved. It's going to require our corporate partners to be involved. Dayton is a, as you all know, Dayton, the region is a community, certainly, significant resource. There's a lot to put on a relatively small. So we think $5 million minimum, $10 million optimal. But $10 million is.
Thank you.
A very quick overview of the programs that we run, SBDC Program. If there is a program that all of you, as city commissioners, should take ownership of and should take a great deal of pride in, it's the SBDC. Our SBDC has always been an urban SBDC. It's always been, by design, focused on the city of Dayton. The state came to us about three years ago, said, we love what you're doing. Will you become a region SBDC? We said, yes, as long as the primary focus can remain in the city of Dayton. So, through the generosity and the commitment of this commission, your money, the contract that we have with you, goes into our SBDC. It funds the seven people that we have working with mainstream businesses every day. It funds some of what we do from a technology perspective, but as I'll show you later, we have other resources for that. What you need to know is, these dollars are leveraged by our relationship with the state. So every dollar that you provide to us, we get at least another dollar from the state. So every dollar that you give us, we're able to donate. We're able to run the SBDC program through a very generous, and we deeply appreciate the support you've always provided to us. That lets us leverage state money. So we can build, as I said, seven people. Seven people who are doing remarkable work in support of small businesses. It's a remarkable team of people who we're really proud of because they are an example to the state of Ohio and what can happen when we marry regional focus with a third world focus. So SBDC Program, lovely to visit us and meet Kim and her team. Just remarkable. Deeply committed to, deeply committed to the community, so much so that we have a full-time person who focuses purely on interest in the city. Our ESP Program, our ESP Program by volume is the largest program we run. And I told you, I'm going to show you my budget, and if you can always see how much that really reflects. This is, and this is not a great thing, transparently. This is about 75%, maybe 80% of our revenue. So it is a very significant program. It is a program that is unique to the state of Ohio. Other states don't run programs like this. We're very proud of this. Certainly, we have a concern about our reliance on this program, so we're working today and every day to bring other resources to the entrepreneurial ecosystem, so that should this program end or be left in, we can continue what we do. But, having said that, very proud of our ability to win this program. This is a competitive program. We were able to bring back to the Dayton region. Dayton region lost this program in 2015. Another organization ran it, not the Entrepreneur Center. We were able to win this program back in 2017, and we're now the second largest in the state, second only to Cleveland. If I check, Cleveland region is half the population of the state of Ohio, and we are the second largest to it. So, very, very proud. And again, for the record, city of Dayton is a huge part of this. That funding you provide allows us to pull money back in the future. So that's a $30 million, $29.8 million program, 2023, 2025. It's exactly the same size, 25 to 27. So significantly, so it's been brought into the community. That lets us drive in. And this gives you a quick sense of impact. This is July 2017 to 2024, the impact we've had. So we've taken $27.2 million from the state of Ohio. We have zero pre-seed funding, so I've told you, we don't have a local fund. We generated $30 million of community match. The city of Dayton is a part of that community match. We generated $74,410 client service hours as of end of 2024, $1.07 billion. That's revenue from those companies, really non-deluded grants to those companies. Can't speak to what it did to the tax base, but I can tell you that if they're generating revenue and they're creating jobs, they're probably paying taxes. And so, $1.07 billion for getting ready to tell them over in September, that we're at about $1.25 billion. So the wheels are turning, and the flywheel is speeding up. When I say ROI, what I mean to say is, for every dollar we got from the state, we've driven $39 of impact. And just in 2023 to 2024, that's 48 to 120. We're going to see higher numbers in 2025. Why is that important? Because we're leveraging the money that we have, and we're increasing the pace of the entrepreneurial ecosystem. 244 clients we've served, 1,100 new jobs. That's net new jobs. We don't count a job that happens to go away as we leave it in our total. We only count net new jobs. So have we created more jobs than 1,166? Yes. To the extent that those jobs went away, or a company downsized, or a company had a change in plan, we subtract those jobs. So those are 1,100 jobs that didn't exist and exist today. The average salary, $80,000. These are good-paying jobs. Entrepreneurial jobs in our small businesses are well-paying jobs. 30% of those clients won another state award. I won't go into much detail on it, other than to say it allows us to transition technology from a research institute, $200,000 into a company that wants to transition a technology out of the Air Force Research Laboratory, for example. And fully, 39% of our clients are engaged in some way with the Department of Development. Again, simple math, of that 1.1, $1.07 billion, about 60% of that came in the city of Dayton, 2017 to 2020. Questions at all?
Yes, I think the issue, you know, I like, almost having to repeat everything you say relative to the net job increase. That is a tremendous boost to, you said, for core downtown Dayton. Also, in terms of our neighborhood, because those individuals are working and living throughout all parts of the city. And the aspect of how that contributes to the region, and how the region is stronger. And they see favorable results from their investments, and then they continue to look for other ways to benefit them. I mean, I just thought to paraphrase that, but I think that's the point that you're trying to make. That's the point that we really appreciate.
Exactly right. Yeah, well said. Well said. Exactly right. We're seeing regional communities look to the urban core, say, just careful. We're seeing regional communities look to the urban core, see for companies that they want to move to the region. Right? Now, we're getting on the border of the thing. There are places downtown that we can go. City Manager and I were talking earlier about a project, certainly, the Center City Building, directly across from the Arcade, and had a great deal to us. The Nine, or whatever you want to call the Arcade District, had a great deal to us. We're trying to create an environment where you know where you're going, you know where you're parking. So you may change your job, you want to change your parking spot. So, you know, focus on creating that density of opportunity in the urban core. But, you know, it's not the worst thing in the world for people to come downtown and look to try to bring companies into the region. That says a lot of good things about the city.
Exactly.
Other questions?
Yes.
That could weigh in your question, Commissioner, if I possibly. All right. TBSF, I'm going to talk about very, very briefly. I touched on it. TBSF matters to you if you want to transition technology from a research institute. Why is it important to us as a community? Because we have New York's Dayton Research Institute, largest materials research institute in the country, we have an Air Force Research Laboratory, the jewel of the Air Force, and frankly, arguably, the jewel of all national research laboratories. We have Parallax Research Institute. We have research institutes that are generating technologies, generating opportunity. If it's just going to sit on the shelf after research, it doesn't do anything, it creates any account. So TBSF allows to create that account vibrancy. So in our portfolio, 48% of our portfolio have secured $63 million in follow-on investment from federal sources. That's the small business innovative research dollars. So they've gotten shared wallet from the federal government. Federal governments continue to support what they do as they spin that technology out. But what's more impressive is 35% of the TBSF portfolio, sorry, 60 companies, 35% of the portfolio, have generated $635 million in equity investments. That's other people's money. That's the investors, the investor class. That's the angel network. That's the venture capital networks. That's powerful. When you say you're going to take a technology out of a research laboratory, and you're going to attract other people's money, private capital? That's remarkable. So TBSF helps us do that. And finally, I would talk very briefly on our support for what we are, the accelerator for the US Air Force Research Laboratory. Cibertown, Small Business Innovative Research Technology Acceleration Project. When you win a research contract with a big, large research laboratory, you are connected to us. And out of space in the arcade, we are focusing on helping you commercialize your technology. We put 320 companies through that program since its inception about seven years ago, and those companies have gone on to generate $3 billion in follow-on. About a billion and a half dollars of that comes from another federal source, follow-on investment, a different lab, an acquisition contract with the military, and then this comes from private capital. So a nice mix of private and public capital. So very proud of the fact that the Entrepreneur Center, a nonprofit in Dayton, Ohio, is the accelerator for the US Air Force. Pretty exciting. And run out of the arcade. Questions at all? All right. I told you that I was going to be totally transparent with you. I believed in that. I am an open book, have always been and always want to be an open book, so I'm putting the information in front of you that is a little sensitive, but there's no identifying information. I thought it important that you understood the ride that we've been on. So 2019, our revenue was $4 million. We'll finish 2025 at $9 million. 2026, our operating plan in 2026 is a touch 10. So the growth in the program has been built around what we established, the strategy we established in partnership with the city 10 years ago, and been executing against, and allowing us to grow our program. We are a nonprofit. We plow our money back into our organization. One thing we've really been trying to do, we're trying to put money in the bank so that we can, number one, weather any changes we might see at the state or the federal level. Number two, invest in our programs, invest in our people. So when we carry a cash balance, please understand, we're not distributing it. It's not going to me or any of my team. It is there for entrepreneurs. We're growing our programs. But we happen to believe that as a good steward of your money, a good steward of state money, the very best thing that we can do is, as we are able to put money in the bank, so we can sustain our operations, so we can contribute to other programs, we can add value to other programs. Ibrok, a good example of that, as you saw when you approved Ibrok. We, the Entrepreneur Center, are contributing $155,000, I think, over the course of three years to Ibrok from our funds. Funds that we were able to provide because we focused on being a lean organization, but an organization that tries to protect our longevity. Questions on that trajectory and all? All right, here's our budget. This is our budget for 2025.
Excuse me, let me go back. Just on Ibrok. I know we approved it a couple of years ago, talked about that, about some of the benefits of that whole process.
Of Ibrok?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think, great question, Mayor. I think if you think about the principle of Ibrok, the animating force that was behind Ibrok from the very beginning, that started with city staff. The animating principle there was that Dayton is actually blessed with a lot of organizations that help entrepreneurs. It's not a question of a not enough resource. It's a question of connecting that resource. Right? And so the animating force for Ibrok was really, how do you connect organizations that are very different, working really well? How do you make sure that, as I work with the chamber, the chamber works for them? They get out of each other, yes. That's a principle of Ibrok. So Ibrok, I think, to the citizens of Dayton, reflect what will feel like a higher level of service. A higher level of delivery, a higher delivery service, more integrated level of service. And then, man, one thing that is helpful for entrepreneurs is, turn to the city of Dayton. You do a search for support because you're an entrepreneur, and you get on your favorite search engine, and you say, I want to support Dayton. You see this list of others, and you start calling them. You call the Entrepreneur Center, and we say, absolutely love to help you. But you know who you ought to meet? You ought to meet Belinda. And we send you to Belinda. See Belinda. Belinda says, oh, you know who you ought to meet? You ought to meet so-and-so. And the entrepreneur goes, plays Ring Around the Rosie. Everybody's saying they want to help you, and they do, but they get tired. And so one of the principal features of Ibrok is that it's, that you can touch any organization. That organization is aware of the organization that you touched, aware of what each organization said to you. And we can act as if we were working in concert with one another. So we're doing that from infrastructure perspective, literally a database, where you can see what the city said, what the chamber said, what the Entrepreneur Center said, and so the entrepreneurs.
Just like our homeless policy solutions. That's really funny. One entry.
And that's deceptively difficult. Now, my SBDC, by federal law, can't share information. If you're an SBDC client, confidentiality is paramount. Well, how do you work around that? Well, they enter the Entrepreneur Center. If they get referred to the SBDC and they become an SBDC client, SBDC can take it. But when they come into the Entrepreneur Center, you know who you are. You can connect your background. You come to MBRAC, MBRAC Services, you connect your background. And so that digital connection is really important. And then, the wisdom and the vision of the city, the city staff, is you connect, and then you provide me, and that's what Ibrok really is.
Thanks. Just as planned, right?
I'm sorry?
Just as planned.
Just as planned. And everything goes slower, Mayor, than what you want it to, but just as planned. We have some exciting announcements coming up, which I'll share. Yes, just as planned. So as an organization, again, I told you, total transparency. This is what we do with our money. This is where we get our money. Our staff, as I said, we'll run a year of about 27 people. We try to always put a little bit of money in the bank. You think that's the right thing to do as good stewards of your money, of state money, of federal money. We want to be able to sustain what we do. Questions on our budget and all? I'm happy to go into any detail you'd like. Okay. This is where we are right now. I only pointed out to say, the city of Dayton... This is where we are right now. I only pointed out to say, when the city of Dayton provides money through a. Subcontractor or a vendor, we need to know how we treat other vendors, how we treat small businesses in the state, so we pay. We leverage your money well. We try always to focus on sustainability. And deliver your value to our. Any questions about our operations? Any questions about where we are and how we're doing? Okay, let me talk about Ibrock. Mayor, thank you for the introduction of Ibrock. That'll be in the mail, I suppose, right? So there, from a progress perspective, from an administrative, a contractual perspective, let me just say. The city has been tremendous to work with, as always. City staff has been remarkable to work with. When I say remarkable to work with, what I really mean is they were a partner and. They to build a contract that allows us to do what we were in partnership with the urban league. It was important to us, it was important to this commission, that the urban league be central to and directly connected to the Entrepreneur Center. And that is true. That adds complexity in the contracting. And so the city has been, just, Jay and the team have been tremendous. You did allow for a small advance so that we could sort of get ahead of the work we're doing. Advance has been paid. Thank you for that. That's allowing to amplify what we're doing. And we've created this digital connection between our two organizations so you can feel confident. When the Entrepreneur Center and the urban league work in concert together, we really are. From an operational perspective, we've established that connective tissue, that little connective tissue. So that we can begin to share contracts and share engagements. Our marketing and branding is being finalized right now. We looked at some file marketing yesterday. Our public launch is going to be the twenty fifth of September. So please mark that down. I know you will be receiving the pin with a formal invite today, this afternoon. Twenty five September is really when we say, this is Ibrock fully engaged, fully ready for a client. Fully ready or engaged. We've been engaging with. It's just a bit of a coming up. We had a chance to talk about it in April. Since and now we're able to say the doors are open. Twenty five September. As I said, we have been working with the community, been facilitating meetings with what we call business support organizations. And that's that collection of people who are actually touching those entrepreneurs. We've been meeting regularly. Urban League is leading this work very, very well. We're working with some specific pilot clients. To demonstrate that in this planning and launch period, we're not just sitting on our hands. We're actively engaging with clients. Again, this was the wisdom and the vision of the city leadership. City manager and staff, wanting to be able to say, we're working while we're building the airplane. And so we are supporting specific clients. We had fifty three candidates for the executive director. I am confident that Nicole Miller and I will not make a more important decision. And our advisory board will make a more important decision than the executive director. Fifty three applicants for that executive director position. Thirty three of those candidates, sixty percent had diverse backgrounds. Twenty six percent, or twenty six of those were female candidates, twenty seven male candidates. We've conducted five formal interviews. We and our advisory board have narrowed that down to two candidates. Our final interview is Friday. And that is our final interview with the advisory board. Nicole and I have completed our work. We've recommended two candidates to the advisory board. That's an advisory board that was established by city staff. That advisory board will tell us who they think the appropriate executive director is, and will extend an offer. I hope that that offer will be extended early next week. We're close. I'm going to have somebody employed by the. Or I'm going to have to go to the show and better than slip the coin. Because I do not want to have that meeting. I can't stand in front of the community and say anything when I'm actually being an executive director. So we want to make sure that we're so close. Here's our plan and our timeline. It is everything I just told you. There is another role, a capacity building role, that we will begin to interview for. We wanted the executive director to be in place to start really building his or her own staff. So that capacity building manager, we've got good recruits for that, we've got good candidates for that. We want the executive director to take his or her feet on the ground. Make sure that they're comfortable, have their own vision, build their own staff. So that capacity building recruiting will start in mid September, more quickly. But again, our public launch is twenty five September. Oops, I'm sorry. And as a full project timeline, the only thing I would call out specifically is that our commitment, and I love this, commitment to you. Is that we are going to hold fundraising strategy by November of twenty twenty six. LaShay was very direct in talking to us.
Really? Is LaShay direct?
I could use other words.
Good.
Very direct. And impressing on us the importance. That if we were to win the Ibrock contract, that fundraising had to begin to. And our gentle, very gentle pushback was, yes. But fundraising vision is hard. Fundraising with metrics and impact is not. And so LaShay, ain't enough. And heard it very direct way. You can say, all right, I'm giving you a year. Get your feet on the ground, get the executive director in place. Show your impact to the community, then you better bust your rear end. I will be polite in them. Thank you. And so I will tell you the very first goal.
Use those words.
She did not use those gold. I confess that when she said it to me, I probably blushed, so.
I don't believe that either.
That's true. That is not true. She's been wonderful. The very first principle, the very first goal, the very first objective for our executive director during our interviews was, can you raise money? Can you raise money? This cannot be a. You're all familiar with the organizations that got funding from the parallel organizations, went to NEST. And then struggled. You can't have that. So fundraising will be our primary focus. Operated to demonstrate in first, and I'm confident that we already are. Exciting times. And again, thank you staff, city manager, and commission for the vision. We have the envy of many. But the privilege of talking to a lot of our peers. All right, stop there. I'm happy to go into our capital access strategy. It's a little dense, candidly. I wanted you to see it transparent. But it is a little bit forward looking than maybe the commission may want. Again, I'm happy to go into it. I want to be respectful of your time. Any questions? I don't think I've set up to this point.
I have to run.
Okay.
I do have some questions for you, and I'll just reach out to you. I'm trying to get over to Startup Week also, so we'll talk.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Questions at all?
Richard?
Mayor, thank you. I appreciate your presentation, your detailed presentation. I don't have any questions right now. I'll review. Probably if I do have any other questions, then I'll back to the mystics team. But thank you. I appreciate all of the detailed information.
Absolutely.
Yeah, two questions. How does the Entrepreneur Center, with our economic development, broader economic. Development strategy for the city, who's our point person that works with you on that work?
Yep. So I'll answer the second first. Our point person is Veronica. We meet with Veronica monthly. The monthly meetings consist of a review of our statement work. Which is formulaic. We've been in partnership with you for years. But it is meaningful in the sense that we're checking the boxes. We're saying, what are we, the Entrepreneur Center, viewing? In line with, the vision of, and the direction of the commission. We are also using those opportunities, those meetings to look forward. What should we be doing in the city? So for example, we haven't announced it yet. We're planning it with the city now. But we feel like as a community, and as a community of entrepreneurs in the city, the entrepreneurs don't really understand. And don't understand the importance of the vision and the strategies that the city puts. And so you hear a lot of people complaining. You hear none of them. A lot of people complaining about, well, I don't understand what the city's doing for small business. Why isn't this happening? Why isn't there a fund for this? Why isn't there a better way to get here? Why isn't there a? Lots of people complaining, play word. But they don't understand the totality of what the city is doing. I'm not a commercial for the city. I don't exist to be a commercial for the city. But if our residents and our entrepreneurs understood the value of those relationships and how to work with the city, city staff, city departments. Everybody would be better off. And so, two months ago, in our regular meeting, Veronica and I were thinking about it, brainstorming a little bit. And we said, you know what we've got to do? We've got to try to change that. And so we're going to do some city focused entrepreneurial forums. And again, Veronica's vision was the commission, city manager, staff, be part of that. You got to demystify some of the processes. You got to demystify, then I go and get a permit and how zoning works and all that kind of stuff. We can do that. Kind of hard for an agency to do that, but we can do that in partnership with the administration or the agency. So it's that kind of work that we do on a regular basis with Veronica primarily. I've been blessed to meet with LaShay. I don't know, probably more times than she cares to admit. Who cares? Because she's always telling us what to do. Meeting with LaShay regularly, and then I'm blessed to get a chance to spend some time with Shelley on larger kind of strategic initiatives. So connection with city and staff, very deep, very, very enduring. How we connect to the larger economic development ecosystem? I think I would simply say, Commissioner Fairchild, almost. Repeat what I said about outreach to the community. We do exist to demystify some processes. We do exist to translate business speak. For city staff. And city staff speak with small businesses. So we understand the city's larger vision for urban development. For a part of it, we contribute to. We understand and contribute to the city's larger staff for, I'm not sure what we're calling it, the revenue. How do you generate revenue for projects? Under Shelley's leadership, Commissioner Shaw's leadership. So participating in that. I would simply say that. It's been a real pleasure and an honor to be a part of those conversations. There's a voice for small business, whether it's I or other staff members. There's a voice for small business, I think, in most of the planning that's going on in the city, or at least the discussions that are running in the city. Which is, it's among the unique to the city thing. And a lot of viewers have very envies of the way that we have the city.
Hearing you say that, I was curious. Do we have, well, first, is there someone in all the. People who provide services to the entrepreneurs? Is there anyone who's particularly, I'm going to make false contact. Anyone who's particularly well versed in all the, well, I guess there's the previous question. How much interactions do these entrepreneurs have with the city in terms of zoning permits or. Funding opportunities, those kind of things? So what's kind of the scale of that? Is there someone on your side who's well versed in that, who can give guidance, kind of shepherd them through, navigate them? Or is there someone on the city's side who can be navigator through all those things? And you know, an entrepreneur has one, one point person for those questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Fairchild, I can get you specific numbers. I don't have them in front of me in terms of volume. I think it's a fair question. What volume, what number of small businesses are engaging with the city? I can tell you by volume, meaning literal volume. I hear about it a lot.
Okay.
I trust that that number is pretty significant. I would say that, and I consider this a complete strength of the relationship between the Entrepreneur Center and the city. A lot of those are going through Veronica. And Veronica is getting my entrepreneurs, HR entrepreneurs, in touch with the appropriate people. Creating frictionless pathways to resolve issues. Best example I can give you, a real time example I can give you, is, as you've all seen in the news, the, the Montessori, Ballard Montessori. Took residence in the Entrepreneur Center at the Hall, I should say. They took one of our conference rooms, turned it into a school, effectively, Montessori, a Montessori high school. Turns out that they had to have a particular permit for that. They thought it was a zoning permit. It turns out it's just an occupancy permit. But they didn't know that. They didn't have a clue to talk to. Veronica helped me navigate the system, get to the zoning team. Zoning team said, no, 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 zoning is fine. It's zoned appropriately. It's a building permit. Get your architect involved, get city permitting involved, and in three days, he had that resolved. They thought they were going to have to delay opening, and he resolved it. So. The relationships between the city and the Entrepreneur Center and the entrepreneurs are fairly high level. It's going through Veronica, myself, some of my staff. But in truth, I think that. Means that pace of resolution is pretty significant. And we're able to turn questions around very quickly for entrepreneurs. And the city exhibits its responsiveness, I think, in a really.
That's great.
Yeah.
And then last was around kind of capital access, and I just kind of skimmed through the presentation points. So I was curious, what role does HRC play, particularly thinking through. You know. NTRC has some national strategies on getting access to capital for small business and particularly minority businesses.
Goes right back, great question, Commissioner Fairchild. Goes right back to the question Mayor asked, kind of. What is the vision of Ibrock and how does Ibrock really enable connection? One of the parts of Ibrock that I think is so smart and is envisioned by city staff is that. There is a specific role to bring all of the business service organizations together. And when one of them has a novel idea, a different approach, something that's going to be working in other places, and they want to test and model. Ibrock facilitates that across the multitude of organizations. My direct answer to your question is, as we think about capital access strategies, Ibrock's the vehicle that will bring us together as a community. Will let us model some of those techniques, some of those tools, some of those approaches. And HRC is at that table, bringing those ideas, those concepts forward. Ibrock as a construct allows us to bring those to the community, and Ibrock allows us to potentially fund some of these things. So it is that sort of connective tissue that amplifies everybody's voice. So your question about capital access, HRC has an idea on. Concept for capital access. Ibrock's the vehicle that we use to surface that idea. Ibrock is the vehicle that we use to promote the idea, connect the idea to our regional BSOs, and their vision becomes. No questions?
No, nothing new. Thank you. Appreciate it. Good. Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you. I appreciate you all so much. Thank you for the.
Take back to please your staff and tell them thank you also from us. Not only the effort that you make on behalf of the region, but specifically bringing out the to the city's primary. I know that that's probably because of your influence, but we do appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. All right, Dean. Thank you so much.